The hearts that we all see.
Amen.
Amen.
God bless you.
Let's stand for the flag salute.
Call the roll, please, City Clerk.
Councilmember Guerra?
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Here.
Councilmember Trehu?
Here.
Mayor Protemcho?
Here.
Mayor Robertson?
Here. Potential conflicts of interest, any council member has a potential conflict of interest may announce the item now and recuse themselves from discussing or voting on the matter. Oral communications, at this time, any member of the public may address the council on any issue within its jurisdiction, but not on the agenda. No action or discussion will take place on any item that is raised during public comment. Issues raised will be referred to the city manager for review. Speakers are asked to keep their comments to three minutes or less. Does anyone have anything they'd like to say tonight?
Jim Avalos, 1701 Dinuba, Salma, California. I'm here because there's some issues in our city that are very concerning, you know, not only for the residents, but as the council as well, you know. You know, a long time ago, being on the council, I was in the council for sixteen years, and I've learned what not to do and what to do in the past. We had, when I came on the council, it was good times, and all of a sudden, the economy crunched, and we had to lay off people and everything. At the same time, I learned things when I got on the council that what we did in development, what the past council did in development as far as infrastructure, you know, giving, giving, giving a big box store a tax structure break, and then they came back later on and says, hey, man, you owe us over, they owe us over $5 million. And we had to, the city of Salma had to pay it out in increments. If I know what we know now, but I wasn't on the council back then, if I know what I know now, I'm warning you guys now. Stuff like that, all it did, it hurt the city of Salma because there's no forecast of how the economy is going to go. But if we had that money way back then, I would never have laid off my cops, my fire, and a couple of my personnels in the city of Salma. I would, I would still be fully staffed way back then. And I'm, I'm just telling these things because it's, it's foresight. I'm giving you a warning before it happens. So I caution you guys very carefully when you make the decisions, like the parks, when the grants and stuff like, we had a grant a long time ago. We lost it because the issue with CID, we had some issues with CID. We lost that money. We have to get back to the state. We ever get it back? No. Once you lose it from the state, I'm never going to get it back, guys. I'm going to tell you that straight up. Because if the state government, they look at you and says, hey, why should we give money? They're going to say, well, because you just gave it back. If you wanted it, you would have kept it. And that's how they look at things over there in the state government, guys. So very cautious with decisions you make for the future of city of Salma. And like the parks, stuff like this, if you can do it, and if there's grants, especially the parks right now, grants, if you can do it in a, in a, you know, phases. Visaya did it in phases. And the reason why I know that, because I got educated by saying when they did their part. The city manager educated me. So you can't build things overnight like that. It has to do, it has to do it in increments and phases, and how you get it, and how do you achieve it? So I'm just giving you guys little hint in life. Think about these cautious things when you move forward in decisions for the city of Salma. Because, you know, you're looking at taxpayers' money, you're looking at how you're going to generate infrastructure, but also, same time, don't give the barn away. It's very important. Because a long time ago, the past city council before me gave some of the barn away, and it affected Salma greatly, and I'm just kind of cautioning you.
Thanks very much.
Very much for your time.
1057 Mill Street, Rose Robertson. I'd just like to thank the Board of Supervisors, Buddy Mendez, for appointing me for District Four Cemetery Board. So I just want to introduce myself. I will be a new board member for the next four years. We'll be as transparent as possible as, as a board, and our first meeting will be January 27, Thursday, at 4:30 at the cemetery office. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations. Anyone else with oral communications? Anyone online or on the phone, City Clerk? With that, we'll, we we're going to have a special presentation of our swearing-in ceremony tonight for our city manager, Fernando Santian. I understand we're going to continue that?
Yes, if the council doesn't mind postponing that to the February 7 meeting, we've had some COVID-related illnesses in the family that is preventing them from being here tonight.
Sadly, that's all too common these days. Best of luck, and we're praying for you and your family. But we'll, we'll do the swearing-in at the next meeting. Does that sound like a plan? Okay. We will move on to the consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered routine. The complete consent calendar will be voted on by one motion and one roll call vote for purposes of discussion. Any council member may have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed back on the regular agenda. The council can then approve the remainder of the consent items. Is, do any council members have any items they would like removed from the consent calendar tonight?
I'd like to remove I. Check register.
I would like to remove item G. That is their motion to approve items A through E, A through F, and H.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Guerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro? Councilmember Trehu?
Yes.
Mayor Protemcho?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes. Item G, this is a consideration of a one-year extension of a tax-sharing MOU with the county of Fresno. And the question I had, City Manager, was the, the split is pretty one-sided in the direction of the county, and I understand that because they're losing tax revenue as a result of the allocation of that land to the city. And my question is, is that percentage, how long does that last? And two, are there, is there any room for renegotiating that split when an annexation does occur between a city and a county?
Yes, my understanding, and by the way, Bernard Jimenez with the county of Fresno, he's the planning and public works manager for the county is online as well. He's the one who's managing this for, on the county side. My understanding is that this, the tax split is into perpetuity, if I'm not mistaken. And there is room for negotiation if we decide to negotiate a different agreement after the current one expires. It's just, I know there are some cities that are looking at renegotiation after discussions with Mr. Jimenez. I think Fresno currently does not have a tax-sharing agreement, which is holding up their annexations. But there's, there's always room for, for discussions, depending on the direction that the city council would want to take.
You know when the contract expires?
The current contract expires February 27 of this year, and so we're requesting this one-year extension because that won't, it won't give us enough time between now and February to renegotiate a new one. And we, we wouldn't want current annexation projects or applications to be held up because of a lax, a lack of a tax-sharing agreement, because LAFCO does require us to have one. Otherwise, you know, we have to go into negotiations individually for each of those annexations. So, Mr. Jimenez, did you have anything to add to that?
Thank you, Fernando, and members of the council. Yeah, the, the negotiations, certainly if there is a proposal, we will consider. I will tell you that generally, the, the property tax split has been offered to all the cities. We have negotiated and extended recently, let's say approximately four to five, city of Reedley, Kermin, Mendota, Orange Cove, there may be one that I'm missing, but all of them have the same tax split. And, and, and I should start by saying all of our current MOUs have the same tax split of 6238. I will tell you that our board has, has given us direction to make that offer to all the cities that are pending extension. And they are, for properties that have been annexed, that tax split is in perpetuity for the life of that. So obviously, we can discuss any future annexations, but those that have occurred, they've occurred under that. And generally, this tax formula has been in place since about 1990.
Given the costs and given the, the, the cost that the city incurs after the annexation, it would seem that there would be some grounds for renegotiating after some of these agreements have been in effect for a long enough time that the county has been able to move on and absorb that loss in tax revenue. So hopefully, next year, this matter will, you know, come back to the city council, and the city council can review it again, and hopefully, there'll be some, some room for discussing that split. Council have anything to add to that?
Mr. Jimenez, did you mention that the split will continue to be the same, the 62% for county and 38% for city?
Yeah, under the existing agreement, and presuming that the council approves this one-year extension, that would be the, the property tax split. So any annexations that occur going while that agreement is in place, that would be the, the property tax split.
Item I?
To item I, page?
Thank you, Mr. Jimenez. Fine.
58. Okay. First, I just wanted to mention on the registry, there's a total of nine voided checks, and this is the most that I've seen in my three years of being on council. Is there a reason why we had so many voided checks this time?
I would defer that question to our interim finance director, Mr. Carlos Sanchez.
Well, Sanchez, interim finance director. Don't have the answer to that. I can't.
Okay, you'll get back to us on that? Okay. Okay, and then let's go to I have a few of them I need to on the same page, 58, and I can't tell what check number, but I believe it's 78516, and it says Tire Hub LLC, Tires for PD, 35, 14, and 80 cents. Can I get an, an explanation on that? How many vehicles did this affect, or? We know?
I could not tell you exactly how many vehicles that is, but I can check with the, the city mechanic. He would have that information, and we can get that information to you.
Okay, and then also, normally, we always see Les Schwab or Camacho. This is new, this Tire Hub? Was this like an online order, or?
Again, those details, I would have to get with him.
Okay.
And I will do that. I'll make a note, and I will give it to him tomorrow and find out if supply was limited in the area so that he went in that direction, or if it was a base amount of price, and I'll get you that information.
Then I have just one other question, but I don't see the director here. For all the the amounts for the art center, you know, like Zootsu, Sound Design, Zootsu Photography, Zootsu, it kind of all totaled up to about 8,304. Do we know what the revenue is? What, what came in for that?
Go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, I'm zooming in. I had to quarantine myself, so I apologize for not being there. But I will find out. We, Zootsu made money. We had 12 sell outside of 13, so the financial reports all being submitted. The Visa company we use will be submitting all their checks into the city. So those are just way for us to be able to do the play. We have so many people behind the scenes that you don't see.
Yeah, and, and I know you did, you made money because you were sold out for almost two weeks straight, so.
And just so you know, before the play is approved, months ahead of time, there is a budget that needs to be submitted, and your council approves the budget. So there really isn't a lot of surprise, you know, billings at the end.
Okay. All righty, thank you.
You're welcome.
I had a couple of follow-ups, if I may. Next page, 59, check 78552 Comcast. PD to FSCEO, Fresno County Sheriff's Office. Not a huge amount, 900 bucks, but why are we paying the sheriff's office for for Comcast?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm Anna Garza, San Francisco Police Department. I, I would have to get back to you on that. I know that's, that's what we've been hearing a couple times tonight. I believe that was a bill that should have been settled. That Comcast bill was running our, I believe, our something that has to do with our dispatch services, but I would have to double-check. I know Inez from Finance has been working on that for the past six, seven months, so I will have to get back to you on that. And I can do that through email, if that's okay.
Sounds good to me. Thank you for checking that out. And then at the bottom there, 78561, Department of Transportation, Signals and Lighting, it's void. Maybe our Public Works Director has a ID on that one. Do we owe that? I mean, I didn't see it anywhere else. It's at the bottom of page 59.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Last thing I want to do, it sounds like a broken record, but I am not sure on that. I believe that's something we paid to Caltrans for the signals that are in town, but don't quote me on that. I want to, I'll get clarity on that, and I will get back to you guys.
Thank you, much appreciated. I know all of you are really busy right now. You have other things, really important things going on, so thank you for, for looking into that. Appreciate, much appreciate it. Then, next page, 6D. Lozano, 78595, Lozano Smith Legal Services, October 2021. Do we have an annual expenditure number for Lozano Smith that we could see eventually?
We can generate that.
For the year 2021? Thank you. And then finally, actually, two more briefly. Page 61, 78622, State Water Resources Annual Permit Fee, 10,602. Why wouldn't Cal Water pay that? I thought they handled all things water for the city.
I don't know if that is related to our actual water service. That might be something related to our retention basin, stormwater drainage permitting, so I'll look into that.
A pretty big chunk. Usually, everything water goes through, gets filtered through Cal Water.
It might just be a pass-through payment that Cal Water pays us, and then we just pass it through to the state, so, but I will confirm that.
Thank you. And then finally, Cal Card, very last item, well, almost the last one on page 69. Two webcams from Best Buy for PD. What's up with the, with the webcams? Are these body cams? Are these just webcams?
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to report that I do, I am aware of that, that charge. So we purchased two web cameras. We purchased one for the Louis Community Room, and then one for our conference room. Because of the uptick in COVID a few months ago, we decided to get those cameras, because I know we were coming in here to have Zoom meetings, and we, we figured it'd probably be best just to keep our meetings in-house and not disrupt City Hall. So that's what those web cameras are for, and we have been using them.
Got it. So those are not body cams. These are webcams premises, so that people can conduct meetings remotely, given the COVID situation.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that. Anyone else have any questions regarding the check register? That is their motion to approve items G and I?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, Mr. Sanchez?
I'd like a second shot at my answer to, I don't know.
Going away.
I just happen to recall when I said you'll see void checks from time to time on the check reg. Reason you'll see those void checks, there's an overflow of invoices. So much that they overflows to the next check and the next check. Turn out of invoices to print on the checks. What that causes is void checks, because the next check is not used, only the space for the remittance advice. Those avoided by the
How many checks per page can you print? Or per data field?
There's like a half a sheet that you can use to line item every invoice that you're paying. I would say we probably 12 to 15 invoices. System avoid, as I said, the check, and then the check remittance advice area to continue printing the invoices, so.
Got it, then I'll start over.
Because of the Christmas season. Vacation during this time. Checks, I mean, the invoices, the amount that we were paying. Reason you'll see void checks all the time. There are certain vendors that, that have many invoices to it.
If they go over that sheet, it voids it out, and then it starts over. Simple counter.
That, that's the reason you see void checks. It's very rare that it will be one of those when we wrote the check out and, oops, that's the wrong party or the wrong amount. That's all, that's all audited before we make I remembered when I sat down for any checks being avoided like that. Oh, it's the overflow caused by too many invoices for that vendor that causes the use of the next check. Area is used to.
So it's always been that way?
Always been that way.
Okay, so it's not like there's a glitch in the system that can't get repaired?
No, it's not a repair thing. It, it's, we're telling the vendor, the invoices we're paying, and what it the remittance advice tells them exactly what we're paying. Pay an excessive number of invoices, rolls over to the next advice area. And so the system recognizes that, and that's, that's typical. I've worked Some systems have it where you do the remittance advice separately.
Yeah.
This one does, and it puts it right on the check. Then you just tell, it runs out of space on that first check, and then goes to the next check and starts, continues to print the invoices that are being paid and voids that check. Kind of have to picture that. It's
Yeah, it's kind of hard to picture that.
I'll have to bring you an example of it.
So basically
That's the reason we get void.
So basically, on your check, you have like where, like, I'm picturing a pay stub, right? So on your pay stub, you have all your pay that you get and all your taxes and everything, but there's only so much space. So if that space runs out, it goes to the next page, and so then it's voided that check. That makes sense. And then as far as the invoices, I can see it's the end of the year. Vendors are probably like, oops, I forgot to send that one in, because, you know, here I am trying to clean up my, my year-end stuff, and then we're having to pay year-end things, so that makes sense.
I remember noticing that when I but it did the accounts payable, but it didn't come to me that quickly when you asked the question. I was trying to think, who did we write checks to that we voided? But no, it wasn't that. It was remittance overflow on probably about two.
Thanks for your explanation, Mr.
Gets me off the hook for next time.
Do we have a motion to approve items G and I? Um, do we have a motion to approve items G and I? Second.
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Councilmember Guerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Yes.
Mayor Protemcho?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes, we have no public hearing items scheduled tonight, so we'll move on to regular business. The first item is consideration of a resolution authorizing the issuance and delivery of pension obligation bonds to refund certain outstanding pension fund obligations. Of the city to the California Public Employees Retirement System, approving the form of and authorizing the execution and delivery of a trust agreement. Authorizing invalidation action, approving certain financing team members, and authorizing certain other actions in connection therewith.
Mayor Robertson, City Council, Ralph Jimenez, interim Assistant City Manager. Um, here tonight is also Erica Chervin with uh, our Municipal Advisor. And then we also have um, other parties that uh, can speak to the, for you, but um, as a sort of, just a refresher here. Uh, this continues our conversation regarding pension obligation bonds, which we started um, last year. And um, in November, as a result of our last workshop, the council indicated an interest uh, in further exploring. The pension obligation bond option, and um, as a preferred method of restructuring what is the city's uh, debt. What is referred to as the um, accrued but uh, unfunded but accrued liability related to our pension plans. And um, and so, uh, in order to do that, um, as we discussed in on November first during our last workshop. Um, it is advisable that we, if we are going. Port validation of that debt, and so the item before you present several documents. That that um, start us off in that, in that process, um, including um, engagement of um. Of Norton Rose and Fulbright, which is uh, which would be our pension, um, or excuse me, our Bond Council, and assist with the validation process, so. That introduction, I'm going to kind of turn this over to Eric and uh, and. That's um, uh, the process tonight. If you have any more questions, if you have any questions regarding the items before you.
Thank you.
Evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. It's nice to be back with you. I hope you're all uh, relatively healthy. Um, we have a short, very short, three-page presentation uh, that goes through the background, the items uh, that you're approving. And uh, then the schedule going forward um, for for the pension obligation bond, which this validation action is the necessary next step in that process. As you all know, uh, the unfunded liability that uh, the city of Salma has with Calpers at this moment is about eighteen million dollars. That number has grown significantly over the last seven years. Uh, commensurate with that increased liability. Your payments have grown quite a bit as well, and they're fairly irregular shaped. Uh, luckily, as I think we all know, uh, we've discussed in previous workshops with City Council. Uh, the Calpers had had a great year, uh, with the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. They earned over twenty percent uh, on the the accounts. Uh, they also uh, reduced the discount rate to six point eight. So those two things combined. Uh, are going to change uh, the repayment shape that the city of Salma has uh, with its account with Calpers on that unfunded liability. But I'm happy to say that the uh, eighteen million dollar unfunded liability is estimated to go down to about thirteen million. And the the payments on that liability will be uh, lower and shorter. Um, this is part of a process uh, that the City Council has directed staff and your team to undertake where we're. Uh, discussing uh, all of the options uh, related to this uh, pension liability, how to create a plan. And discuss all of the options uh, available to properly plan for uh, paying this payment. Uh, over the next uh, ten, twenty years, so that the city can better afford it. Um, a- as I mentioned, this, uh, the city has directed staff and and your finance team to proceed with the pension obligation bond process. Uh, as opposed to the lease revenue bond uh, structure we had discussed. So to uh, effectuate the uh, pension obligation bond, the the city needs to what undertake what is called a judicial. Validation action, and I've got Russ Trice here with Norton Rose Fulbright, who can go into that in more detail. Uh, on, as he describes the documents that are being approved next, uh, on the next slide. But uh, basically, what the city seeks to do is it files a uh, complaint uh, with the courts and the county, the county courts. Uh, in in essence, uh, this, the city is asking for all interested persons to uh, come forward. Um, because the city's objective is to confirm that the unfunded liability with Calpers is in fact a debt. Uh, on the city's balance sheet that you can refinance with the pension obligation bond. The validation process with the courts usually takes three to four months. COVID has slowed the court process down. Uh, over the last eighteen months, so we don't know really how the Fresno uh, County Courts are going to uh, uh, be as far as timeliness, but we're hopeful. Uh, next page, and with that, I'd like to introduce Russ Trice uh, with Norton Rose Fulbright. He'll go through the actions and. Uh, answer any questions about the validation action that you may have.
Thank you, Eric, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. Uh, I'm Russ Trice. I'm a partner with Norton Rose Fulbright in their Public Finance Group and. Look forward to working with the city. So tonight, there are two documents in front of you, a resolution authorizing. The validation action and approving a form of trust agreement. For the obligation should they eventually be issued, and hiring your team, uh, which includes us and and Eric. To proceed over the next several months to try and put the option in place for the city. We would file a complaint when the resolution is is signed and returned and attached the complaint, we would include the resolution in the form of trust agreement. Then, as Eric mentioned, there'd be a publication period for the complaint. And ultimately, a middle part of the process where the court considers the papers. Ultimately, uh, if the matter is unopposed, the judge would deliver a default judgment. And a thirty day period would run for that judgment, which would put us somewhere in the spring. And um, and then we'd be in a position to issue the bonds. So ultimately, this is the first action of two actions for the City Council. One gets the process rolling, sort of a yellow light. And the second action would be when we come back um, in the spring with a disclosure document for investors and a form of bond purchase agreement. Which would be necessary before actually selling and issuing any obligations. At that point, you would give the green light. Uh, with that, I guess I would take any questions on the documents or the process.
And you're the um, uh, legal counsel expert here. Um, counselor, how long has this been taking? Have you, have you been through the courts lately on an issue like this?
Yes, we've, we've been through the courts regularly. There have been about seventy agencies that have issued POBs um, since January one, twenty twenty. Uh, very large par amount all across the state, but there's big variability. So in some of the Southern California counties, they still have sort of Dropbox filing. Fortunately, Fresno County uh, is in the modern world and has e-filing. Um, but it often does depend on the judge you get and whether they have a criminal docket or whether COVID pushes, you know, sort of all the work uh, back. Validation actions have civil priority, and so at the first opportunity, we remind the court clerks of that. And uh, at the first status conference, we remind the judge of that, but it um. It's been our experience that it's taking validation actions a fairly considerable period of time, three to four months, so. Undoubtedly, uh, you know, markets will change up and down during the course of the process. Right now, interest rates are low. They may go up, they may go down. But, you know, we'll, we'll just have to wait for the environment at the time when the validation judgment is issued.
Questions?
Yeah, I have just one question. So if you're saying it takes about three to four months, what happens if we have an incline, the rates go up? Pretty, pretty high. Then what happens?
Well, so many issuers have have been looking at two things, and I'm going to turn it back to Eric to talk about the two things. Uh, they've been looking at restructuring their UAL for some kind of more level payment. Structure and the usefulness of that to create resiliency and sort of short-term budget relief. And then they've been looking at sort of aggregate savings. So Calper's discount rate is six point eight percent. So you can think of this a little bit like a refinancing of your home, where currently rates are. Are quite low, maybe three percent. And obviously, there would be a point where the the bond rate would be close enough to Calper's discount rate where. Uh, you might consider it, you know, uh, not the right sort of trade, and I think this is where Eric can jump in and tell you. A little bit about what he's seen across the state, um, you know, and what N H A recommends in terms of sort of the go, no-go milestones.
Yes, Councilmember, that is a fantastic question, and uh, we we do believe that interest rates uh, are going up. Uh, so the question then becomes, at what point uh, uh, does the City Council decide that uh, it's not of uh. Enough benefit where the risk versus reward uh, is not there? And we've had uh, with City Council, I think, three, three workshops discussing the whole idea. Of uh, pension bond restructuring and and the risks and rewards. Uh, I think that uh, part of the the recommendation to your point, Councilmember, during the next couple of months, as the validation process proceeds. Is to develop uh, a better understanding of what, where that go, no-go place would be. We would advise the city to uh, create a pension funding policy uh, during this time and approve it. And within that policy, uh, I I think it would be uh, right to include. Uh, what uh, would be the uh, interest rate. Uh, that the city would not want to proceed. So to the extent that uh, Calper's discount rate is at six point eight percent. Uh, City Council may, uh, and we've seen other city councils uh, do this as well, may determine that. Uh, two and a half percent uh, spread, if you will, so a four point three uh, limit on that. Uh, is as far as uh, the city that a city might want to go. That's an example of the the type of. Guardrail that you could put into your policy so that uh, when that time comes that we're, we've got the validation completed. Uh, and we're looking at the bond market, um, and you're thinking about a go, no-go. Uh, that might be helpful to have in your policy and have discussed previous to that point in time.
So this will be ongoing. I think it should be ongoing for the next three to four months until we get something that is concrete in regards to. Well, number one, if it's going to be be approved. But then to also have Plan B in case it doesn't go through.
For um, what, we are planning another workshop. Being at a couple of things, um. Try to go the pension obligation bond route, you know, what what would be the best option to pursue?
Is that for me, Ralph?
Yep, if you want to go ahead and take it.
Sure, no, we we advise and recommend uh, continuing uh, public conversations with uh, you know, using the workshop. Format to um, update City Council on uh, where we're at on on interest rates. So we're at, in, we're still in the low uh, close to mid threes right now. Uh, we expect that to, you know, uh, step up. Uh, some of it might be within already built in, uh, because the bond markets have been volatile, but uh. Up and. Not until we have gone through the validation will a real decision by council to proceed on a transaction need to be made. Right now, uh, this action tonight is just to, uh, as Russ mentioned, facilitate ge- getting the option. Uh, to proceed with the validation, which is going to take three to four months, so we should have uh, uh, as many conversations. As City Council desires during that three, three to four months, so that we put in some, some policies in place. And perhaps uh, some guardrails, uh, so that council uh, has fully vetted and knows what. Um, when you you'd proceed and when you would not.
Thank you.
I think we can move to page four. Ralph, did I answer your question on workshop? We we're glad to have another workshop or more uh, with City Council at their pleasure. Um, as we've sort of developed more information, uh, we expect that that uh, we will do that. I think we also uh, uh, recommend the pension funding policy be uh, crafted. Uh, evaluated by council and and approved during that three to four month period of time as well. So this just recaps the uh, schedule. We we actually started this process back in the summer uh, twenty twenty one. Um, there's a mistake here on the date. Uh, we thought we might try to hit the December uh, date, but that uh, date was uh, canceled. So uh, tonight is the evening uh, of the council's decision to proceed with the validation. As Russ uh, Trice had mentioned, uh, proceeding with the validation uh, starts the clock, if you will. Uh, the paperwork will be put in with the courts in the next uh, couple of uh, business days. And that really starts that three to four month uh, clock, and we can have meetings uh, with council during that time over the next. Uh, two, three months to get a policy in place, talk about structure, um, size. And term, as well as what would the limitation be on interest rate that council would be comfortable executing a a P O B at? Um, but all of these conversations, uh, as we mentioned in previous workshops, uh, the council is not obligated to issue a P O B. Uh, until uh, we go out to market. Actually, we should uh, uh, council should uh, uh, commit to going with the pension obligation bond. Prior to going to the credit rating agencies, because that is a a non-contingent cost that would be incurred. Uh, once we go in front of the rating agencies to get a credit rating for this transaction, so that would happen probably in two, maybe three months. Uh, so during that time, uh, uh, you know, you're you're still in the evaluation about structure and size. And what the interest rate limitations would be, but you're under no obligation to issue a P O B. Until you sign a bond purchase agreement on the date of a um, a bond sale. And that really concludes the uh, the presentation. Um, we don't know how long the validation is going to take, but we expect. It would be, you know, uh, April and or May that we would um, issue a bond if council directs staff and team to do so.
I think I have a question, and I think you just answered it, but so. Is it safe to say that the go, no-go would be right before that credit rating process?
I think so. Um, we don't really want to go in front of a uh, standard impours. Um, and do all the work and credit work uh, uh, prior to that. If City Council has no intention of at uh, of executing a transaction, if the interest rate market is where council would approve it. Uh, that's, that's not, you you'd be incurring a non-contingent cost uh, for that rating uh, agency. And uh, that's not a good thing to do uh, for. a non-contingent cost for that rating agency, and that's not a good thing to do for, for expenses for the city of Selma, but also reputationally with standard impours.
And then you'll monitor the interest rates and let us know, sure via Eric, if the Fed comes in and really wants to pump the brakes on inflation and increases the interest rate big time. That would be a huge interest rate increase, right, to go past 4%?
There's quite a bit of room, Mayor, still, but we're monitoring it. There's a, a Fed meeting, if you will. I think it's next week. And then there's another one in March. So, you know, there, there's two meetings between the likely time that we would be going to market. So we would be monitoring. The bond markets have taken some of this into account, the expectation that rates are rising already. But we'll just have to see where pension bond transactions are pricing at. They're still very attractive in the low threes right now.
Thank you for that. With that, we'll bring it back to council. Are there any further questions? Do we have any questions from anyone here tonight? Any of our visitors? Do we have any? Okay.
Not really a question. Just is this three, the summary?
Identify yourself, sir, just for the record.
Louis Franco, Selma, California. The three-page summary presentation, is that going to be on the city's website for the community to?
It, it absolutely can be. Can we make sure that's on the?
We can make that available on the city's website.
Have anyone on the line or? Line? Okay, that will bring it back to council. But we have another? Like to speak on this topic?
Jim Abel, Jim Abel's 1701 Dinoopa. I, I, when I left office, we were just talking about this anyhow, the issues on these pension plans and everything obligations. I'll be honest with you guys. It's very important that we find a way, honestly, we find a way to take care of our employees that work for the city of Selma because they're the ones that are, are working very hard to make the city move forward. And I, I don't care who works as, I don't care if it's a janitor, whoever it is. They are people that work for the city and make it happen. And they make you guys look good. When things turn around, look good, you guys look good. So, but you guys are the policymakers and decision makers. But at the same time, you're also, when you do policies and decision-making, you gotta think of the morale of the people, of your workers. Because you gotta make, you gotta make sure these people are taking care of it because they're going to take care of you. Yeah, it's like, would you treat your mother that way? Would you treat your father that way? You don't. So the same thing with the employees of the city of Selma. So that's all I gotta say. Thank you.
With that, we'll bring the matter back to the council. If there are no more comments, is there a motion tonight?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Gera?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cho?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Councilmember Traheo?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes. Thank you both for coming in, Eric and Mr. Rose. Thank you. We'll be in touch.
Good night.
And then good night. Next item is adopt resolution approving the master salary schedule reflecting changes in job classifications and pay rates.
Mayor Robertson, council members, Ralph Jimenez, interim assistant city manager. The item before your day really accomplishes two things. It, it modifies the master salary schedule to incorporate salary adjustments that your council approved in August of 21. And, and so it's more of a clerical change by including those approved wages into the master salary schedule. And then the second major item would be adding several management-related positions. It do, of course, this action does not allocate any positions. It's eight, these new classifications. One of them would be the deputy city manager. Another one would be, it already exists, but it just would be adding the position. This one does allocate, excuse me, the, on, for the fire department, the actually be funded. Funding that exists for the position in the department under the ambulance. Other actions would be the finance director taking that vacant position and reclassifying it to director of finance and treasurer and setting the salary scale at a higher level commensurate with the level of responsibility that it has. Presently, that function is defined in the municide code, and we don't, we don't do that responsibility. There's responsibility of the treasurer function within that job description so that that job needs to be brought up to current level of responsibility. Classify the finance director to director treasurer. Other department, I think. Fire department, fire division chief, which already exists, but allocating two positions. Funded through money from the ambulance fund. Director of finance and treasurer and add to the
And is there a budget impact we could see on this? What's the dollars and cents budget impact?
Yes, we've indicated the salary, recommended salary for each one of these levels. And we've outlined the cost by department. For instance, the manager department, if you were to fill this position, you know, moving forward between now and the end of the fiscal year, you're looking at roughly about $75,000 in salary costs. Again, we're not asking you to allocate any of these positions. But, but boss for the remainder of the
Correction, we are requesting for deputy city manager to be allocated at this time.
An additional deputy city manager.
Well, we'd be reclassifying the existing assistant city manager to deputy city manager so that we don't have both the deputy CM and assistant CM designation. We would have just the deputy CM designation, but there would be two positions under that classification.
We'd be doing away with the assistant city manager position, but adding a deputy city manager.
Yeah, just converting it.
Got to be offset by the addition of the deputy city manager.
That's correct.
And that would be an additional $75,000 for the remainder of the budget year if that second deputy city manager were hired tomorrow.
Correct. Okay.
And then is that effect of this, the finance manager, is that net? Or is that for the offset of the, you're getting rid of one finance position and you're adding another finance position? Is that right?
Yes, that would be the net. So where, that number doesn't take into account the savings that we've had from not having that position filled.
Okay, so it's just that position, straight?
Okay.
But that position's currently unfilled.
We have an interim in that position currently.
Right, right.
Okay. And then on your page 145, where it says the finance treasurer department, maybe you guys answered, but it says another 62,690 would be the remainder of the fiscal year. So that would be in addition to the 75,737. So it's a different position. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes.
Without the offset.
That's without the offset.
That's correct. So i- if you really think about it, there's one position that's not currently there that we're asking to fund, which is the deputy CM because the finance director slash treasurer is already allocated. We'd just be filling it.
On page, okay, so we're saying the fire department, the additional remaining would be 50,206, but that's going to come from the ambulance fund.
Chief Peterson?
Yes, so we're depending upon the candidate that would, would get the position and the types of certifications that they would have. We were estimating, I think it was between 40 and 50,000, and then those dollars would come from the current budgeted funding within the ambulance fund.
So this position was already funded?
It, it was not. We've created some savings with overtime and actually some salary positions that have generated enough savings that we will be able to fund this position for the rest of this fiscal. It was a position that we were going to be looking for next fiscal, just due to the, the doubling in size of the department and the needed operational supervision out in the field. But with the savings that we do have available, along with some contingency funding that's available leftover from strike team, we believe that we could comfortably posit, fill it hopefully the end of, of, the end of January with council's approval. So it would be from February on through the rest of the fiscal year, and that's what those dollars would account for.
And then just one other, I have one more for the finance treasurer department. Again, it says the remainder of the fiscal year would be, this is, okay, 62,690. So I just want to make sure I'm calculating this correctly. We have the 62,690. We have the 75,737. And then we're looking at the 50,002 six for the fire. Is the ambulance, though? I mean, it's coming from them. This is coming from the general fund. Is that correct?
Yes, all of them except the fire position.
And with the community development director, would that still be a position?
Yes, that is the deputy city manager position over development services.
So community development director goes away. That's now the deputy?
Rolled into the deputy CM position, correct?
Rolled into the deputy CM position.
Not, not this one, the existing deputy CM, essentially the position that I left unfilled, that is the community development director.
It's, it's the same position?
Correct.
Okay, but we're not filling an additional community development director?
No, we are replacing the deputy CM that was also the community development director. So we're not hiring both a deputy CM and a community development director.
So it's almost a wash.
Exactly.
But for, we already have the, the position that you left vacant. That's where it been filled. I mean, that's already been allocated, and we've already approved that. We're just approving the secondary, which is going to be admin support functions under the HR, the labor relation budgets, that support, correct?
Exactly. So, so in other words, we're splitting the former assistant city manager position into two positions. One's a finance director, treasurer, and one's the deputy CM over all admin support functions, including the finance and HR and IT and purchasing and everything that's not development services. I will still be overseeing all of that, including public safety, transit, and general public policy for the city.
Will the code enforcement still be under building and community services?
Okay, yes, they will be under the deputy, deputy CM over development services.
Correct. Are there questions or comments? Do we have anybody here tonight who would like to make a comment on this topic? Lady clerk, do we have anyone on the line? Okay, thank you. With that, we'll bring it back to council for comments before we ask for a motion. Have a comment at this point?
I have a comment. I'm just a little bit nervous in regards to the timing. We're here today, which is January, and normally we're, we're handling personnel or budgeting closer to July, you know, June, July. My only concern is, you know, these are pretty large amounts of monies coming from our general fund. And the concern I have is our resources. We have projects that we say we have, but we're having issues funding these, these projects. I would like to see our groundbreaking. I'd like to see Amberwood, a groundbreaking. We continue to get information stating that they're going to break in February, they're going to break in November. Well, here we go, another year. We still haven't seen any groundbreaking. I'd like to see revenue coming into the city before we can see new positions. I'm not saying we don't need them, and I understand that, but I just want to be ju, I want to see justification in regards to supporting these additional positions. It may not be additional, maybe just one or here, but the amount of money that's going out is, is high. And not to see any groundbreakings at this time. I, I do, you know, presents a little nervousness for me. So I'm not against it, but I think the timing is just not right. Maybe if we can look at this, maybe table it for a few more months. I mean, just because now we're going to look at the POB. You know, we got something in, of that to look at as well.
Well, I would, I will say, and your comments are, are well-taken, councilmember Gera. The finance director position is one that we urgently need to fill because currently our interim is a retired annuident who is going to run out of hours that he can work for the city, and that position is critical for budgeting purposes especially, but for just the operations of finance. The other one, the fire division chief is not being funded out of general fund, so we really don't have a concern there. The only one that we're really asking council to, to really create is a deputy CM over operation, or excuse me, over administration. And because we have very, I guess, we're, we're in a tight, tight labor market in hiring and HR and everything that goes over HR and compliance and personnel policies and things like that is something that's really important for us to be able to manage as we move forward and, and cultivate our relationships with our bargaining units and labor unions, et cetera. So that is one, the one position that we're asking council to really create at this time. But the finance, if we, if we defer that, we won't be able to fill that position in time before our interim departs.
So we're pretty much almost stuck because you're wanting to, if we don't approve this tonight, then you have to look at this, revisit this again next year?
We can revisit it at any time, really. I, I think I, I mentioned previously that we are coming back in March with the mid-year budget adjustment to look at where we are with our numbers. But it's going to be difficult to do that without a finance director. If the council desires, you could choose the two positions that are already, that are actually funded, which is the finance director and the fire chief, division chief, and then we can talk about the deputy CM over admin at a later time.
So that's, I think that's where I, I strongly approve. Anyone that needs to be replaced, definitely we need to replace them. So that's not the issue. I'd like to see those positions filled because of course we do need a finance director, and I understand Mr. Sanchez is only our interim, and he's doing a great job. Thank you for that. But we do need to get someone permanent, and I understand that. So the, the problem, I mean, I'm not saying I want to have those positions filled, and I thought we were, we were posting for those positions. Aren't they on the website?
Yes, we have gone through the recruitment for the finance director position.
And the fire chief, that's clearly understandable. You know, that's not an issue. I just think that looking at a second deputy for the size of Selma is something that I'm, I'm, it's hard for me to swallow at this time. And I'm saying only because of the fact And I'm saying only because of the fact that I'd like to see revenue generated coming into the to the city to justify the additional work or additional position.
Can I, can I?
Those are my comments.
Okay. I I'd like to, I'd like to say a couple of words in regards to this issue. I I applaud you for actually bringing this issue to the to the forefront. The fact that, you know, the words we're being said right now, you know, we're, we need we need to have brown, ground breakings, we need to have development. In order for us to have development, we have to have the quality, we had to have staff. And every time we say we're we're lacking and we're, you know, we're we're lacking the funds and, you know, it it's kind of ironic. We're we're talking about a sixty million dollar park, twenty-four million dollar park. We don't have the money for that. But we're actually saying that we can't fund an amount to make sure that we have the adequate staffing and pay the adequate staffing right now. I I I I'm in full agreement to make sure that this passes. I'm a hundred percent because the community of Selma needs to become pro-growth. And before it becomes pro-growth, we need to invest in our employees, we need to put proper staffing, we need to have adequate staffing. We need to make sure groundbreaking, amber wood. Every project, the Raven develop, every project is going to need hands on deck. And we understand we have, we have deficiencies, we have deficiency of some S K F, we have deficiencies, we we're lacking engineering, we're lacking master plans, we're lacking infrastructure reviews. That means staff, we need staff, we need people to be on board to make sure they can make those decisions. So when we look at our financial structure, we look at wanting to do a a financial restructuring. I I'm fully agreeing for this because of the fact that it's not about if you want to produce and have an investment in Selma and groundbreaking, and we need to have the staff here. We need to put the staff in first to make sure we can get that. We've been bottlenecked enough for the last past years. And and I'm, you know, I'm not here to negate anybody's comments, but I'm just here to say that I am pro. I'm 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 for this. I believe in this. We have to invest, and that's just my opinion. So, thank you.
So I'm a pro-growth, but I'm not pro-growth in expenses. And I think tonight.
Sixty million dollar park is.
Can I finish, Councilman? I I didn't interrupt you when you were speaking. Thank you. Thank you, sir. So, you know, I look at an example in the city of the school district. And they hired too many managers. And they got top heavy, and look what happened when this this number of students diminished. For whatever reason you want to give it, the number of students diminished, their budget went down. I I don't want us to necessarily not ramp up. I think we should. But like Councilmember Garrett says, at the appropriate time, when the level of work justifies it. And when we get closer to the budget as well, I think the timing is a little off on this. I voted against having a second deputies or a deputy city manager along with the assistant city manager when it first came to the council. Because I I just don't think Selma is the right size for that. I think it's it's an inappropriate job position. And I am encouraged that we are looking for a finance director right now. We're actually going out there. So it's, you know, tabling this tonight would not necessarily be to negate that search for the finance director, which we absolutely have to have, and the additional fire staff. And I I would rather have more PD and fire on the streets and more public works working than I would top-level management. I just would. I just think that they're the heart and soul of our city. I know we have to have administration. But I would just, I take caution myself in these very, very high-dollar positions, which have a significant budget impact that can help the city to grow. But in this case, we've had a lot of expenses in twenty twenty-one, which is why I asked about, you know, the annual bill for La Zano Smith. We've had a lot of unforeseen expenses, a lot of contracts have been bought out and that's and that sort of thing. And I think we just have to be careful of adding more and more expense at this time. The park is a different issue because there's a grant on that, a four and a half million dollar grant. That's another issue for another time. This is not, the park's not HR, this is HR, this is about staffing. So for that reason, I think the timing is just a little abrupt on this. I just don't think it's the right time. It could eventually, but I know when I read the ordinance, it says, the first thing it says in the ordinance is council members may request finances at any time. So I really see in the ordinances, it reads that the true intent of our of our ordinances is for us council people to be very mindful of the city spending and the city finances. Thank you. So if we don't have any more comments, is there a motion?
Forward with the request as is.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cho? Councilmember Gera?
No.
Councilmember Tre Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
No.
That it passes, and we will move on to departmental reports. City manager.
Nothing new to report at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. City attorney.
Good evening, council. I just want to say it was nice to be here, at least remotely. Apologize that I have to attend remotely. It's COVID has kind of taken over the the city for a while. It was nice to be here.
Zooming in tonight. Appreciate that, counselor. And our interim finance director, Mr. Sanchez, do you have any comments? No reports. Public Works, Shane Farrell, any reports tonight, sir? Thank you, sir. Fire Chief Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Couple of quick items. Today's city clerk received documents for the property. So it's officially the city's at Thompson.
All right.
That's exciting. And January one, we did complete the process of taking over all EMS services, transport services for the city. And we have moved our crews into the, what we're calling our third station, the EMS station there at across from the hospital. And doing so has completed the process. Where I I give a lot of credit to our staff and and the hard work they put into to making sure that that was successful. And we are definitely working through some growing pains, but everybody's working hard. And, you know, it it's it's an exciting thing. And I can report that revenues that that have come in through the ambulance fund, not talking about IGT and other governmental programs from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one calendar year. Our revenues from billing are up almost forty percent. So we're we're seeing a lot of efficiencies in our billing and you know, the service that we're providing to the community. And on a on a more somber note, unfortunately, I know Commander Garza reported at the last meeting that we were working on a joint badge-pinning ceremony for police and fire on February third. Unfortunately, due to COVID circumstances and the effects that it's having on both of our departments right now. And the fact that our city manager is going to be out on some training. Unfortunately, we're going to go ahead and have to postpone that. And we are working on dates in March. Hopefully, the we'll be through this surge and have all of our staffing back and ready to go. And that's it. Thank you.
I just wanted to let you know also, Chief, that there was a longtime Selma resident who who took a ride in the ambulance on January third. He said, hey, you know, you guys look familiar, and it says Selma on the side there. Is this Selma now? And they told him, yes, it's Selma. Now is, you know, has incorporated the ambulance. And he said, treated him so well, so professional, and to to tell you a really good job.
Well, that's great. Good to hear. Thank you.
Thanks for that. Police Commander Garza.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor and city council members. I've been in law enforcement for about twenty-one and a half years. And, you know, we we have that, we're right in the middle. We have the good and the bad. Unfortunately, I do have some bad, but I will start with the bad and with some good. We were doing so good, too. These last couple of days, we did have two robberies. One was an armed robbery. And one is still un- still being determined at this time. Can't really provide too many details because it has been assigned to the detectives, and they are actively working the investigation. And catalytic converter thefts still appear to be occurring in the Central Valley. They're still very high. I do know that the California Attorney General's Office is currently working on the task force to combat those crimes. So we we'll wait and see what the what Sacramento tells us on what their plan is. As far as personnel, we currently have two reserve police officers in backgrounds. We have two safety dispatchers in backgrounds. I'm also happy to report that we are fully staffed at the sworn officer level, still working on the on the dispatch. But I'm very hopeful we'll get there. Today, we interviewed several candidates for the open community service officer position. So we hope to get someone hired. We hope to fill that position by mid by mid-February. And we are currently in the process of scheduling record clerk or interviews for our record clerks. We do have a records clerk that is, has been with us for a while. And for personal reasons, she is leaving sometime in March. So we want to work ahead and get that position filled, and so we can get that individual trained. And as we, in regards to special events coming up, there is a scheduled blood drive event that will be held on Thursday, January twentieth. It's going to be held in front of the fire department. It's going to be a joint a joint event sponsored by the Selma.
Which, which fire department?
Police Department. What's that?
Which one? What location?
Administrative building, right here across street from the city.
Across the street.
I believe the event starts at ten, and I believe it can, believe it concludes at one. And you can actually go onto the city website and obtain more information. You can actually also register online, or you can just show up and register that same day. The poster does say it's going to be held at the police department, but it's actually supposed to be held at the fire department. And lastly, the Selma Police Department, we are currently working on what we refer to as a telephone auto attendant. We've actually been, this has been in the works off and on for years, but started this back up with myself and the other administrators at the police department. And basically, an auto attendant is basically a kind of when you call city hall, when you call the main number, you have different prompts, press zero to reach the operator. That's basically what an auto attendant is for the the police department. And what that's going to do is going to alleviate calls to our dispatchers. So, for example, if you want to call and you don't want to speak to a dispatcher, you want to speak to someone in a records unit. You just push one of the prompts, it'll directly, it'll send you directly to the records department. So you're not, one, you're not on hold, you get a live person immediately and and dispatch is able to handle priority calls. So it's a, it's a great program. Most agencies have them. And I know it's going to alleviate a lot of calls that our dispatch is currently receiving. And they'll be able to handle the priority calls. And that's all I have. If anyone has any questions for the police department?
I do. So you had a DUI checkpoint on December twelfth, is that correct? Did that still happen?
It, so it was what we refer to, it was a saturation. It was not a checkpoint. Checkpoint is stationary. It was non-stationary. And so it was the DUI saturation. So we were mobile.
There was reading somewhere where DUIs were up like a hundred percent last year. Such a dangerous condition. I really hope we we pay attention as a city to the the greater frequency of of folks out there driving while intoxicated, making our streets unsafe for all our citizens.
We definitely will.
Thank you, Commander. Appreciate it. Mike Kirchner.
Yeah, Mayor Robertson, Mayor City Council, I just want to let you know, about a month ago, the county did their presentation regarding the tobacco. And so we were working on getting that to the city council. But this Friday at the Smart Center, they are doing a presentation on the vaping for parents from ten o'clock to eleven o'clock. And they will be working with the Boys and Girls Club to do another presentation for the kids. So if you know any parents are interested, we, ten o'clock, and they can contact the Smart Center on Friday.
Awesome. Thanks for that.
Yes.
Okay, with that, we will move on to council reports. Councilman Tre Hill?
Well, December was a very busy month. I just want to report out that we have, I helped out at Roscoe Dog's Toy Giveaway. Donated some toys, Monzo Gym Toy Giveaway, Selma Cares Toy and Food Giveaway was really, 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 really an eye-opener for me. The Selma Valley Lioness Lions Giveaway Toys and Food. I I just, I I just want to make sure that we recognize, I recognize a lot of people because I I noticed, man, there was a lot. I mean, from every different direction, people giving away food and toys. The businesses in Selma are just, they're just, they're just so unique, so different. And it was so encouraging to see so many people give and want to give back to the community. And I just want to recognize them, maybe in, maybe later down the road when I'm here at home, I will mention to recognize them. I also like to do a little shout out to the Chamber of Commerce for the 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 Christmas parade. It was, it was, it was something to believe. I I I I was so happy. I was, you know, present. And I just, I just want to make sure that the Chamber, you know, thank you guys for for doing the 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 parade and that's it. That's all I got to say, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
So December kind of just went, you know, super fast. But the first, I want to say Happy New Year to everybody. I hope that twenty twenty-two brings a lot of prosperity, health, especially now in the times that we're in. But I was preparing to attend a conference with six families. We went to a conference in Michigan. It was the twenty twenty-one encounter conference. It was basically a two and a half day spiritual retreat. And so I was really preparing for that to bring back just one of refreshment because I really needed some time away. And I I really encourage everybody to do some type of a a retreat. Refreshing and effective of prioritizing and and balancing, you know, really especially when we have I don't want to say this is an extracurricular activity, but it is things that, you know, things come up. And so you really need to try and have a balance. And if you're spiritually balanced, I think that everything else just falls into place. So I don't have much more than that, other than just again, Happy New Year, and I'm glad to be back. And hopefully, we can and operations. Oh, one more thing. Sorry, I just remembered. And just going back to, you know, I know that at our thoughts on, you know, hiring management positions. But for me, I look at it as this is creating step-up positions. So anyone that is in our current I don't want to say portfolio, but in our in our our employees, it gives them and and let me see what's next, what's the next step. And even though it may seem like we might be hiring from from outside, it also gives an opportunity for the in, you know, for our current staff to say, I've been stuck here. Where can I go next? So I'm really excited that we're creating these step-up positions. And so I applaud you for that. And and also manager, I know that you had a lot of time to also press, you know, bring this to the table. So I can, I applaud you both. So thank you again.
Councilmember Gera.
Okay. I attended a ribbon cutting at the dog park, which was nice. I also had a meeting with Congressman Valladell, which he won't no longer be our congressman, but yeah, he. Which he won't no longer be our congressman, but yeah, he is for, I think, the remaining of the year. And I also attended a S K F meeting. Again, that is something that we need to continue to look at, city manager. You know, making sure that our projects are aligned with S K F. And I want to make sure that we continue to do that, you know. And then also. Oh, I just wanted to mention in regards to the COVID testing. You can go online. A lot of citizens were asking me if there's any way they can get a COVID test. And you can go on covidtest.gov. They are offering a free test guy test. They'll send them to you. It's four per household. So it only takes about two minutes to go online. And you'll get those sent to you. Okay? So that's a kind of a nice thing. And then just on one complaint that I had. In regards to. The panhandling, you know, there are several people. Panhandling in the middle of the in the midway. And they're between Wendy's, you know, that and Golden State. And going back and forth. What are we doing about that? If PD, if you see them, are they doing anything about it or just allowing them to be doing that?
Go ahead, Commander.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members again. We're not enforcing panhandling at this time. However, if we do get a call for service, if an individual is. Causing a road hazard, we will respond. But as far as enforcement, we are not enforcing it at this time.
Because we have an anti-panhandling ordinance in the city. Is that correct?
I. I believe we do. I haven't read it. It's been a long time since I've read it. I know there is one, but I just. I know that we've really never enforced it unless, like I said, we get a call for service. But as far as us initiating the call for service, initiating it, we we typically don't do that. It hasn't been our past practice.
And then just one other complaint I keep getting. Pacific Pizza sign for six ninety nine. People keep telling me, why do we still have that sign there? They've been out of business for over five years and that sign is still there.
We will send a notice to the current property owner. I think that sign is still within the city limits. I think we had that complaint before and we were going to look into whether that was on the county side, but I think it is within the city limits still. So we'll address that. Thank you.
And that's it for me.
Yes. Yeah. Happy New Year to everybody. As I say, our COVID thing is happening again. I did, I always found out that there is. For restaurants, there are some free tests available. And it is located at the car, see Salazar Corporation is on the Nelson Building off of McCall. And it's suite one fourteen. And I think we were allowed ten tests per restaurant. So you know any restaurant owners, which we can't get to all of them, like your favorite one, suggest to the owner, they can go pick it up from there. Okay? I'm going to get a number for maybe Tracy can post it out and you guys can send a number. Okay? You call her, it is a Carl Salazar's office person and she's in charge of that. So. So reach out to your restaurant people that since we can't, we don't have emails to all of them and we can't reach them. So do help them out because it's going to help because, like you say, we have so many people working and we're involved with a lot of people. This would help the owner and people themselves to keep it safe, keep us all safe. Okay? Just a couple of announcements. We have a mixer, our first mixer of the year tomorrow night is at Cattlemen's at five o'clock. Usually, this is the best one. They give you the really good food and drinks. So it's a really, you know, a good one to to go ahead and into bingo and, you know, interact with businesses and see who, you know, just start a new year. Okay. The second event coming up is next month. Chamber is going to do the crab feed. It's going to be February twenty fifth. It will be at the Selma Portuguese Hall this year. And so hopefully you guys will all join us on that one, too. And February first is going to be Chinese New Year, Happy New Year, say Gong Hei Fat Choi. And it's going to be the year of the tiger. So if you're born that year, this is going to be your year. So go after everything you want to do and achieve it. Andrew. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to respond to Councilmember Mendoza Navarro's prescient remarks about. People who start at a position and have giving leadership opportunities. We we have someone like that in our audience tonight, our Public Works Director, who started with Public Works. Worked his way up to that director position. And I remember when you became the director. And it was my honor to give you a standing ovation, sir, for when you became that and and had that culmination. Of your career and you've just taken off ever since then. So thank you for your service. And I really appreciate the aspirational nature of our city where you can start. At the entry level and you can become the director. Really, really inspirational. Another issue, street light at Pacific across from Selma Pallett, it's still not on. PG&E still hasn't turned that on. I was. Over there and it was dark and gosh, you know, they're they're running employees there all the time and it'd be just a safety issue for that if PG&E could turn that on. I'd like to say thank you to City Manager Santion. And our code enforcement officers for working with Caltrans to clear out any legal homeless encampment at ninety nine and Floral in December. Thank you for sticking to that and finding safe, a safe haven for those folks who were at at that. At the ninety nine and Floral and getting them in a less dangerous environment. As Councilmember Gara has mentioned, we met with Congressman David Valladell along with City Manager Santian. I gave out toys with the Knights of Columbus at St. Joseph's Church, which was a great experience in December. I served dinner on two folks who can really use it at the Christian Cafe in December. It was just nice to see the kids in need with Mayor Pro Tem, with the President of the SPOA. Our newest Selma Cemetery District Director there and kids got Christmas presents and I know they appreciate it. It was it was really nice evening. I want to also, I went to the ribbon cutting at the dog park. That was awesome. Thank you for that. And I've attended, I've attended, I attended the retirement party for Pastor Maria Tafoya. Good luck to her and her future endeavors. And thank you for her service to her church. And I attended the several Calvans board meetings. I'm chairing an HR subcommittee. And we're doing reviews right now of the executive director. So that's been an interesting process and hopefully that will result in even better service. For Calvans, which, you know, as everyone knows, provides bands for correctional officers and agricultural workers. And then. I'll end on on this. At the last council meeting, I believe our count, one of our council members. One of my colleagues, I believe it was Councilmember Tre Hill, had a question about the delay in the implementation of the stoplights at McCall and Dinuba. And I believe there was a question of whether it was COG that was doing that and by implication, our COG representative, myself, who was standing in the way of that. So I did a little research on this topic and I received the following. From the director of Fresno COG, which was. The stoplight issue at Dinuba and McCall. Was awarded in the two thousand and nineteen and twenty congestion mitigation air quality regional bid program. Fresno COG programmed the project in July, on in July of two thousand and twenty. And the job was obligated in December, two thousand and twenty. So the right of way is supposed to get constructed before, was supposed to be constructed before May first of this year. However, the Selma city engineer asked COG to push out construction to two thousand and twenty three, two thousand and twenty four. And the implication and the actual statement from COG was we are not holding up this project. The delay has fully been directed by the city. Selma could obligate the work on this project. And COG says they would love it if the city could obligate construction sooner than programmed. So I hope that's explanatory and I hope that is a. Good explanation in response to the issue that was brought up at the council, a meeting by the council member in December. And with that, we will.
Mr. Mayor, I actually, that was not, that was not the, that was not the question.
Sorry, Councilmember Gara was speaking and then it'll be your turn. Councilmember Tre Hill.
I just want to make sure because we've gotten so many complaints from citizens in regards to that location for a signal light. Why? Would the engineer? Make that kind of decision? Wouldn't that decision has already been approved by council? So why would it be delayed?
The matter really is a contractual. Matter with our previous city engineer and there was a lapse in terms of the of the of carrying the project forward. And so we're in the process of. Drafting a or negotiating a new agreement with our previous city engineer to carry that, continue to carry that project forward. So the request by our existing city engineer to. You know, extend that project was to give us more time to get that project, you know, designed, the right of way acquired. And get us out to bid. With our previous city engineer under a new contract. Just so we don't lose that money. But we are still planning on moving that project forward.
Councilmember Tre Hill?
Yeah, you know, the that was a, it was a invalid question. What I actually was requesting was that we would put. The Dinuba stoplight on the agenda because I had done some research. And I had found that it was actually our staff that was holding it up. And I wanted to make sure we put on the agenda so we don't have these issues. It wasn't that I was, I wasn't, it wasn't that I was naming COG. The the reason for delaying the project was that I had done my research, but I wanted to. Bring it back to the council and fully vet the reason why these issues are happening. Because if you look at it. And if we go back, that project's not the only one that was funded. It was a downtown revitalization was funded also. And those two projects I had requested from the on the dais. To be brought back to the council so we can have good discussion, so we can make sure that we set policy that will not make this ever happen again. Because it's one thing, everything, I will say that as a legislator of this community. I take fame to the fact that we sit on the dais and the majority of us will make a decision that would adhere to the city manager to make the decision. I wanted, I was really, when I, when I asked that, it was because I was out of my mind saying to myself, why are these projects taking so long when the money's funded? And because, and that's the reason why I had requested, had nothing to do with COG. It had to do with our city staff. I wanted to do a presentation. I wanted staff to do a presentation to us. If you can go back to the city council meeting, you'll hear that I asked, I wanted these two issues to be brought back to the council for discussion because I knew. It was at the level of our city staff, not at the county. And we need to make sure that we need to stick to these. And I understand now why we we were in this position, but, Mr. Mayor, I thank you for the full acknowledgement of the information. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. I just wanted to make it clear that I'm not standing in the way of this project. I'm a hundred percent behind it. And it's a very, very important project that needs to be get done, get constructed sooner than later and any effort we can do to. To go towards that. I'm in full support of. Do we have any more public comments tonight before we adjourn our meeting? Anybody on the line on the phone? With that, we'll bring it back. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.